Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting for November 14th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we got the feedback under control? You all right? That sounds better.
Yep.
All right, so a couple of housekeeping things. Vince Manuel, Supervisor Manuel is not with us tonight. He is actually on vacation. And Supervisor Patrice Tureen is on Zoom. So tonight, I'm your Chair, Fran McCusker. To my left is J.C. Toll, Vice Chair, and Supervisor Beth Moyer. We do have an amended agenda. The White Marsh Ambulance Service was supposed to be here for our accommodations. They couldn't make it, so they'll be on the agenda for December. So I'll turn it over to J.C. for the announcements.
Thank you, Fran. It is with heavy hearts to share the passing of Hugh Molton. Hugh was instrumental in the preservation of open space and was the catalyst for the Township's Open Space Committee. In his capacity, he has been able to preserve over 450 acres in White Marsh Township. This is a great loss to White Marsh Township, but we wish to thank Hugh for his tremendous contributions to White Marsh. He will be very well much missed. And I wanted to offer to my supervisors to share some words.
So I'd like just to say about Hugh, Hugh was a major contributor to White Marsh Township. I got to meet you about eight years ago when I first became a supervisor on the board. And before I got on the board, I heard a lot of stories about Hugh Molton. And I couldn't wait to meet the legend behind open space in White Marsh and the White Marsh Foundation. When I got to meet him, I learned that Hugh was a wealth of knowledge. His historical knowledge of the township was second to none. And he really kind of took me under his wing. Every time I was around him, he filled me in on different things, gave me some advice on how to do a better job. And he was just a genuine guy. White Marsh Township will miss Hugh Molton and his wife Katie, that's for sure. But I just wanted to say a few words just to commemorate Hugh. And, you know, I know his memory carries on. We were able to preserve the meadow over there at the Highlands. So Hugh's spirit will live on. Thank you.
And Beth, did you want to say something?
Sure, just briefly, as a new member of the Open Space Committee as the Board Liaison, I had the pleasure and the privilege of meeting Hugh. And really to know Hugh was to feel Hugh. He was just a lovely human being, but with tremendous impact. So my heart goes out to members of the Open Space Committee who I know are mourning the loss of Hugh, but also to his family. And just to say that the impact that he's had on White Marsh Township really will be felt for generations. He's amazing. But thank you.
Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family at this difficult time. So I'll just continue with the announcements here. The Ridge Pike Project for Section D is scheduled to be completed by the end of November. We thank everyone for their patience while this necessary work was being performed. Leaf collection began on October 21st and will run through December 6th. Public Works asks that residents remove their portable basketball nets, hockey nets, and other obstructions from the roadway to avoid any potential damage to both the township equipment and the personal property. The trash mob will be on Baron Hill Road from Harts Lane to the Andorra Spring Water Company entrance on Sunday, November 17th. That's this Sunday. If you would like to volunteer to help, you can check the township website for information. Boy Scout Troop 12 will once again be selling holiday trees in the Miles Parking Lot starting November 20th. The township offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th to celebrate Thanksgiving. And the Township Board of Supervisors wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. And one addition, Saturday, the library will be planting a whole group of trees. You can volunteer to help put them in, either through the library website or through Colonial Canopy Trees. I know they're still looking for a couple more folks, a few more hands. Thanks so much.
Thanks, J.C. All right, here we go. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from October 7th, 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to open the conditional use hearing number 05-24 for Shuby Lee Tattoo LLC located at 450 Germantown Pike, Unit 1, Lafayette Hill, PA, to operate a personal service shop, tattoo parlor, in the VC1 District?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kilkenny.
Yep. Hi, thank you very much. Oh, he's just trying to put them up. Okay. Can I do it?
Uh huh.
Okay. Chairman McCusker, thank you very much. I want to go ahead and mark some exhibits for this conditional use hearing. T1 will be a copy of the application of the floor plans, site plans and photographs submitted September 5th, 2024. T2, proof of publication of this hearing in the Times Herald, our newspaper of general circulation, on October 31st, 2024, and November 7th, 2024. T3 will be the applicant meeting notification dated September 12th, 2024. T4 will be the resident meeting notification dated September 12th, 2024. T5 will be the posting of the notice of November 4th, 2024. T6 will be the fire marshal review dated September 12th, 2024. T7 will be the zoning ordinance compliance review from September 26th, 2024. And T8 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission recommendations, which recommended approval at its meeting of October 8th, 2024. If people are not familiar with the conditional use process here in White Marsh Township, it's akin to a special exception before a zoning hearing board, where the Board of Supervisors sits in a quasi judicial process. So what would happen is there will be a brief explanation from our zoning officer, Mr. Gottenplan, an opportunity for the applicant to go ahead and present. And then there would be an opportunity for board questions, an opportunity for public comment. And then the board could either continue the hearing to a later day if they need more information, or close the hearing and even potentially take action this evening. Because this is a conditional use hearing, akin to a zoning hearing, I just want to see, is anybody requesting party status? What party status means is you would have an opportunity, if you lived within 500 feet of this potential application, to call witnesses, to cross-examine and present evidence of any kind of witnesses that were presented tonight. Just because you do not receive party status or don't request it, doesn't mean you can't comment. You can still comment anyway. I just wanted to see, is anybody requesting party status? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gottenplan.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties.
Do you want me to pull it up, Charlie?
This is a personal service in the VC1 District. This is a proposal, as you heard, at 450 Germantown Pike. The personal service, in this case, is a tattoo studio for application and aftercare and is located, as I said, in the VC1 District. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on October 8th. They were very pleased with the proposal after they heard it presented and made a recommendation in favor of approval. This evening, Cheryl Rents, the attorney, is here. And I will, with any luck, share my screen and show you some visuals that we have of the site. I'm not quite sure why we're not doing this.
I think Craig has it.
One second, Craig. Patrice is just telling me that there's no volume on the Zoom.
I have a different presentation.
Okay. Cheryl, if you'd like to come up and give a brief explanation of the proposal, I think we...
Oh, we got it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Rents. And with me is Lindsay, who is going to be the owner of the tattoo parlor. As I explained last time, this is going to be a very unique tattoo. We'd like to think of it more as a salon. People will be making appointments that you can't just drive in. And Lindsay is extraordinarily careful about making sure that there's everyone that comes in, gets all their ID. If they're underage, their parents have to be with them. They cannot send in just a letter or email. And the parent has to come in and present all their IDs. She puts together a beautiful salon. There's plenty of parking in the back. And with everyone's approval, she hopes to be open for business about December 1st. She will be moving in from a location a little bit further down from Germantown Avenue. And so we hope to be very much a part of the Lafayette Hills community. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
If she's going to testify, I swear she should be sworn in.
Lindsay, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Rachel, do you sound as though the testimony has given the matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Lindsay, do you want to just tell the committee a little bit about your concept for this tattoo salon?
Hello, I'm Lindsay. I have been tattooing for almost five years now. I tattooed locally in Norristown for a little bit. I'm currently operating at a planned meeting. I worked in Skidback briefly also. And I aim to be very different than the shops that I've worked in. They're what we kind of call like a street shop. And for me, this is more of a private studio space. I take a lot of pride in, you know, tattooing my clients safely and providing a safe space for them, as well as, you know, a sterile environment to be tattooed. Never had any incidents thus far. And yeah, I do love that idea, and I hope to be able to continue it in Lafayette Hill.
When we look at Lindsay, she's an artist. She's very talented. So we hope she can be a member of your community.
Thank you. Any board questions? Any public questions? Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
One second, we're going to go to your approval. This is very important. Do I have a motion to approve conditional use number 05-24 for Shuby Lee Tattoo LLC to operate a personal service shop, tattoo parlor at 450 Germantown Pike, Unit 1, in Lafayette Hill, PA?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to White Marsh.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to open the zoning ordinance update of a new Spring Mill Mixed Use District, SMMU, and a companion new transit-friendly design overlay, TDO, district with an amendment to the zoning map reflecting the two new districts?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gottenplan.
Let me go ahead and just mark the exhibits again before we start, Chairman McCusker, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Gottenplan. A copy, T1 will be a proof of publication in the Times Herald, October 31st, 2024, and November 7th, 2024. T2 will be a draft ordinance with Exhibit A, map of proposed districts, and Exhibit B, list of parcels with existing and proposed zoning. T3 will be a certification of installation of postings of rezoning in 30 locations noted throughout the Spring Mill area. T4 will be a transmittal of draft ordinance to Montgomery County Law Library dated October 25th, 2024. T5 will be the attestation of ordinance accompanying transmittal to the Law Library dated October 25th, 2024. T6 will be the Montgomery County Planning Commission review of October 11th, 2024. And T7 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission recommendation, motion recommending Board of Supervisors' approval of the ordinance with changes, now incorporated in T2 at its meeting of August 13th, 2024. So after there is a hearing on this, a presentation by Mr. Gottenplan and any other appropriate witnesses, such as a planner, the board would have an opportunity to comment, and then the public would have an opportunity to comment. The board could then continue the hearings if they so choose, or close the hearings and take action this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. These amendments are final products of the first phase of our zoning ordinance update, which we started about three years ago. And these specifically are implementing some of the recommendations in the Selective Comprehensive Plan Update, which was adopted in 2020, and more recently, the Spring Mill Area Multimodal and Land Use Study, which was adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment in June of This is the culmination, these amendments, I should say, is the culmination of approximately two years of effort, working with our consultant, Molly Gordioso, from Colliers Design and Engineering. And her associates worked with the steering committee comprised of a number of representatives of various commissions and groups and staff of the township, and also worked with the Planning Commission in refining and coming up with the final result, which you are going to hear about this evening. The purpose of Spring Mill, as you'll hear from Molly, is generally to encourage more transit-friendly development, more mixed use, recognize the proximity of the Spring Mill area to the train station there, the SEPTA train station, the Spring Mill general area, the Schuylkill River Trail, and encourage access both visually and physically to the river, which is something that we have found lacking in various proposals that have come before the township. The Planning Commission reviewed this at three meetings over the course of spring and summer, and at their August meeting, recommended approval, as indicated in the exhibit list with a couple of minor changes, all of which have been incorporated into the draft that you're going to hear about this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Molly, who will give you a very short PowerPoint explaining how we got here and what the ordinances are about. Molly?
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, board members. My name is Molly Gordioso. I've been working on this project for a while now as the principal planner. And what I'd like to do is just walk a little bit through, from a high level, the context of what, where Charlie was talking about, what went into, the thought behind the update, and some of the specifics within the actual draft language. The purpose of the update, a primary element being, as Charlie mentioned, looking to the future land use plans and studies within the township and identifying areas within the code in the Spring Mill area that may not currently align with that. We took a look at a couple of different alternative approaches that would better support the vision for future development in that area. We addressed some conflicting and, in some cases, unclear district standards or language to help provide a little more consistency for future proposals and direction and development. And we identified, as was mentioned, the opportunity for transit-friendly or transit-oriented development regulations. Each one of these things coming out of three primary documents, two of which being, as Charlie mentioned, the Township Spring Mill Multimodal and Land Use Study and the White Marsh Township Comprehensive Plan. Both of those speak to higher density development patterns, looking to a compatible mix of permitted land uses, providing for more multimodal access and connectivity, making sure to identify that within and between developments, making sure that there's connectivity to the celebration of the riverfront, protecting the natural resource areas, and incorporating those guidelines. The guidelines I should mention came from the Monroe County, or, excuse me, Montgomery County Transit Oriented Development Model Ordinance, some specific guidelines for that relating to the Spring Mill area specifically. The Future Land Use Plan within the Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as a mixed-use node with waterfront district that speaks to and supports several of the purposes that I previously outlined. And within the Multimodal and Land Use Study for the Spring Mill area, again, taking a look at what was shown as potential development patterns in both mixed use and residential along the area here, particularly to the northern section. Within the TOD Model Ordinance from the county, the specific character of the area identified for the Spring Mill station is a suburban employment center. So the general characteristics provided by that was, you know, looking at it where, as it exists now, potential for high-density residential and employment uses was supportive, retail, looking to prohibit or limit auto-oriented uses to support pedestrian activity, bringing forth some principles and planning of having parking to the rear or side, bringing in more gathering space opportunities, trails, recreation, open space, and bringing in some concepts of multi-story buildings and height and density bonuses for potential residential development. The actual districts themselves, this is the current snapshot, if it goes back, there we go, of the existing zoning as it exists today. The Industrial District, or HBY District, is primarily covering most of this area, and the RDD Districts, RDD 1 and RDD 2, also apply to the area in the yellow outline and red outline. Within this section, we are proposing the creation of a new district, Spring Mill Mixed Use, SMMU, shown as the green on this map, and utilizing sort of, nuancing the boundaries there of what was previously the RDB districts into the TDO, or Transit Friendly Design Overlay. We are kind of creating some consistency here with the base district through the SMMU district, and then applying consistency in the design standards through the TDO overlay themselves. Going into the purpose statement, as Charlie mentioned, you know, really the idea behind the base district is to support that mix of use, providing more of the opportunities for housing, retail, entertainment, and employment, really doing so in a way that creates a cohesive development and, development pattern and connectivity. There's, I won't, it's very small here, I won't read this through to you, but these are the following number of bullets that speaks to the various objectives for, as future development proposals are evaluated, and looking to support each of those elements. Things like capitalizing on opportunities for rehabilitating vacant and underutilized buildings and sites, increasing housing options, and multimodal transportation connectivity. The overlay district now, being a district that will repeal and, in this case, replace the RDD, this district is now, again, as an overlay play, intended to apply on top of that district and really brings in the specifics of the design and character for future development with respect to building scale, the landscaping and site design treatments, open space, and preservation, recreation elements, really looking at, as Charlie mentioned, the public access and views to the waterfront, recognizing the importance of, you know, the riverfront to the area and the opportunities that exist there. One of the things, just to note here, as an overlay, it's being applied uniquely in the sense that the, you'll note there is that strip of the HBY, the purple there on the south side of budding the riverfront is staying. But the TDO is an additional district, so, or is an overlay district. So the SMMU uses will remain as the base uses, and they will also apply within those areas that are TDOs. So where you have the purple with what is the TDO 1 subarea on top, you also have the opportunity for the Spring Mill Mixed Use Districts, permitted uses as well. In that TDO 1 area, given the direction in wanting to provide a higher density residential development pattern and really support more of the mixed use and active streetscape, the, there's a prohibition of residential that has less than 15 units per building, and there's no first-floor residential. However, parking would be allowed on the first floor to support any of the higher-density residential. The bulk and dimensional requirements of the Spring Mill Mixed Use District would supersede that of the HBY District. One of the reasons why that would be important is to maintain consistency in terms of building setbacks and character, building heights, things of that nature, so that you have a seamless transition of development throughout the area. And then, as I mentioned, some design standards applicable to the area. That includes expanding upon some of the existing district's requirements from RDD that apply to landscaping and public riverfront access, off-street parking. We really went through to try to make sure we were reducing any situations where there may be inconsistencies with the Salvo, and making sure we were pulling in as much as made sense of the model ordinance from the county to provide amenities and site design guidance. So some, each of these elements applying to, as I mentioned, parking, multimodal connectivity. Another element, major element, being clarifications to the public amenities that are required, and a new element being the building height bonuses, which may be awarded in exchange for specific community benefits. Where we landed here is allowing for a potential increase in building height, density, lot coverage, and/or modification of the development if you, the proposal is providing moderate-income housing or alternative energy sources, and, one of the other two, off-street pedestrian connections and amenities, or a gateway installation. There was great discussion on what qualified for each of those things. We've worked through to provide a little bit more of a definition and guidance on, you know, what would bring value to those and consider them as amenities. And that is the high-level view of the whole district.
Molly, would you go back to the proposed zoning map? Thank you. Thank you. There is one issue that I'd like to bring up. There's a very small map error, a small portion of parcel, I'm going to give you the county parcel number, 650005581015. It is one of a number of parcels owned by Alliance HP Spring Mill LLC, which owns the Spring Mill Corporate Center in its entirety. One very small portion of that parcel was accidentally not rezoned SMMU with the TDO 2 overlay, as was the rest of their parcels. And it's part of that small brown area on top, the mapping clipped a piece of the parcel, and we would like to correct that as part of this hearing to make that their entire parcel, SMMU, excuse me, with the TDO 2 overlay. And I believe Eric Carlson is here for Alliance to confirm agreement with making that change. So Eric, if you would do that, that would be very much appreciated.
Do I need this?
Yes.
Do you sound as though you're the testimony and will give with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you spell the last name for me?
Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Mr. Solicitor? That is, that is sufficient.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, I believe our presentation is over.
All right, thank you very much. I know this has been vetted for a long time, and it was great to get, you had the residents involved in it. And I think this will be a good use for the ever-changing Spring Mill quadrant. So this goes along with our comprehensive plans. So thank you very much. Is there any board comment, questions? Any public comment or questions?
Yeah. What does transit friendly mean?
Come on up to the, come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Glenn McDowell, last name is M-C, capital D-O-W-E-L-L. I live on Ryder Street, almost at the corner of North Lane, 359 Ryder Street, White Marsh. What does transit friendly mean?
So transit friendly is a pattern of So transit friendly is a pattern of development that supports a higher density in and around transit areas, so transit station, stations in this case, like the Spring Mill Station, that would allow for more connectivity in a way that hopefully reduces the reliance on automobiles for transportation. And it's also a pattern of development that looks to support mixing of uses. So again, those amenities and things are also provided in the same area, walkable area, and with connectivity to the transit station, as well as other modes of travel, like sidewalks, you know, trails, things like that.
We already have, for an example of transit friendly, transit-oriented development, is the courts at Spring Mill Station. When the current district was put into effect in 2007, it was done in recognition of the train station, and it was the beginnings of the development of a transit-oriented development. These ordinances will facilitate more of that type of development, and more, as Molly said, connectivity to the station and the trail. And, for example, we find that the courts, even though they have parking, multiple spaces for every apartment, they have a very high parking vacancy, because many of those people take the train to work, and maybe instead of having two cars for each apartment, they have one car for each apartment, and we couldn't reduce traffic in that area.
Good. A couple more questions?
Go ahead.
You said something about recreational trails, where, where would that be? Or is there room for recreational trails there?
Yeah, so this builds off of some of the current regulations that are in the RDD district that require provision of public access in the form of trails along the riverfront. So it's really just bringing that in and was providing some clarity to that. I don't know if there's other elements that Charlie, that you'd like to...
In other words, it's just using the existing trail?
Well, there is also, through the existing ordinance and carried forward into this ordinance, there's actually a walking trail right along the river as the parcels along Washington Street develop. So if you just want to take a casual walk, you're not necessarily on the Schuylkill River Trail with a lot of fast bikes and things of that nature. You can take a more comfortable stroll and be right along the river as those parcels develop.
So that raises the question, right, in front of the train station, you can't see the river because there's a two-story parking building there. Will that building stay there?
We're not expecting that building to stay there. That corporation is no longer owner of that property. We're expecting redevelopment of that. They've already been in front of the zoning hearing board with a redevelopment plan.
Great. So there'll be access right to the river?
Yeah. And one of the things that we've emphasized, even with the current ordinance, is visual access and physical access to the river. The development that's currently under construction, River Place, a number of townhomes, we had them basically redesign their site plan so that they wouldn't block views of the river. They totally reoriented the buildings, so there were corridors, visual corridors to the river, and they don't, didn't block the river with long rows of townhomes. So that, that's more emphasized, even greater in these ordinances.
Great. And I was glad to see something about moderate-priced homes there, housing, since that's such a challenge for the whole Philadelphia area, having affordable housing. Can you say a little more about the price range, or what, anything more about that?
Yep, I can. So that was something, again, that was also worked through with the work of the Montgomery County Planning Commission as well. And where we moved forward with was the use of the area median income standard. I don't remember it exactly off the top of my head, so I'm just trying to make sure that I have that in here. But it's the same definition that is used by the affordable housing agencies to define what modern, moderate income housing is. So let me just hear for a second.
And it is an option, it is not a mandate in the ordinance. We'd, we'd hope to see some, but it's not, it's only if a developer elects to try and get some bonuses.
Yeah, I saw the option was energy-producing something? What does that mean?
Well, they could, for example, green roofs or use of solar energy, any more sustainable energy use would qualify.
Yep. So the moderate-income housing provision is providing at least 10% of the total number of dwelling units reserved for moderate income, and they shall be reserved for households with incomes not exceeding 80% of the area median income by the household size specified by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency from Montgomery County. The units must remain affordable in perpetuity with a covenant that runs with the land. For alternative energy sources, solar, geothermal, or other renewable energy power generation facility, that may, the density bonus may be granted if it's installed on-site with an energy generation capacity of at least 10% of the expected annual energy usage for the buildings intent, which it is intended to.
So it's only...
Hold on, sir. Sir, can you come up to the podium? This is a hearing, so I gotta keep some formality.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So it's only 10% that would be used for moderate housing? Is that what you just, just said?
They, they have to provide at least 10% of the units.
At least around 10%. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on.
Virginia Angstad Duckett, A-N-G-S-T-A-D-T, Duckett, D-U-C-K-E-T-T.
Can you raise your hand? Just solemnly swear the testament and will give the sparrow with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I live on Center Street, which I don't know where that is on that map, but it's partial industrial, partial residential. And my question is, Center Street's a dead end, and there's a scrap recycling place at the bottom, and is there any plans for that to be cleaned up in that area?
I don't think I have... You don't know where that is either?
There, this ordinance does not mandate any changes. If a developer or a property owner elects to develop, make changes, then this ordinance will govern those. But there's no specific plans to make a, any change to a particular land use that's there.
Okay.
So if, if it, if the owners of those land uses choose to leave it that way, it, it will stay that way until they decide to change or sell the property.
Okay. There's also, at the end of Center Street, there's a trail that goes through the woods to get to bike trail. Is that going to be, like, improved upon? Because right now, it's just like a dirt thing that local people use. But is that going to be improved upon? Or is there going to be more additional parking made available for that?
Again, again, the ordinances don't require change. They allow change if a developer or a property owner chooses to make changes. I believe the trail that you're talking about is not a public trail, so there's no immediate plans that we have to change it. Again, it would depend upon that landowner, and if they came in to develop their land in a different fashion, it's something we would encourage them to improve. But this will not automatically make that happen.
Okay. And as for the multi-dwelling buildings, I under, the way I understand, that would be like where David's Bridal is now? Is that correct?
Yes, multi-man...
Yeah. What we, what we have seen at the zoning hearing board is a plan for, I believe it's 49 townhouses. They have not submitted any development plans yet. They just got some zoning relief, so if they choose to proceed, they can. But they need a number of approvals before that can happen.
Okay. Other than that, property there, are there any other plans for multi-use? I mean, like, multi-dwelling, assigned from there?
That's the only potentially active land development down there right now.
Okay.
Other than ones that are under construction, the River Place Townhomes.
Right.
They are not finished.
Then there'll be nothing on, now David's Bridal will be on the right side, there will be nothing on the left side of the, of North Lane, next to the river?
Well, they go down, their land goes down to the river.
Right.
So there will be, again, there'll be green space along the river, but there'll be that, if they choose to proceed, that entire parcel would be developed with townhomes and also an extension of Washington Street, so that it's no longer a dead end. That's something that they've...
Okay, but that's still up on the right side. I'm talking about the left side of North Lane. When you go down North Lane, you have the train station, and then David's Bridal is here, right at the train station. But over here, I'm talking about...
Are you talking about the, the area that's green and where the trail goes, where the Schuylkill River Trail goes through?
The trail goes through there, and then there's not only those tracks, but then the river, it goes down to the river.
That, much of that land, much of that green area is a county park. That's all owned by Montgomery County. So I, I don't foresee that being developed. It's very fragile ecologically. It's mostly floodplain and other, has a lot of other environmental issues. So, but that is parkland.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I have Sedell Zo on line here.
All right.
Good evening. Sedell Zo, Hart's Ridge Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I applaud this effort, and I appreciate the time and consideration that went into this from the part of staff and members of the public who participated, as well as county staff that participated. And I think it's commendable that this, these amendments are doing the best they can to align the vision with the, with the code. The problem is that when projects come before the zoning hearing board seeking variances, they're almost uniformly granted, as was the case with the proposed development at the David's Bridal site. I believe every single variance they requested was granted. And so, on the one hand, you have a planning effort, and a board of supervisors, and the public that has developed a vision and put that vision into the code, and then a zoning, zoning hearing board that basically undermines that vision. And I don't know what can be done about that. I would hope that the township administration and leadership could perhaps educate the zoning hearing board members with regard to the vision, and particularly as these updates happen, the comprehensive plan update, for example, the Spring Mill multimodal study, for example, and, and this, of course. Because my sense, having attended many, many zoning hearing boards, is that they're, they do not appreciate the vision, and in many cases, they're not familiar with it. So that is my concern, and I hope that something can be done to align the zoning hearing board's members' understanding and appreciation with the vision that's encapsulated in the code updates. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment?
Yes, I have Nick Gabriel.
Hey, good evening, Nick Gabriel. I'm over on East Elm Street.
Okay.
Do I need to say the I do thing? If I, all right, sorry. I, I just wanted to double-check that. I wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. Charlie, I think you said it. This is just for the ordinances, right? So we won't see any changes come from this here, specifically, like, what I'm kind of thinking about is like all of the landscaping that Amtrak did on that, I guess, if I'm looking at the map in this direction here, like that southeast area of the Schuylkill River Trail. They did stop past Spring Mill. We're not going to see anything starting, like, from this right here on the River Trail with all that landscape again, are we?
Charlie, can I take an attempt to clean this up a little bit? This is a change in zoning district. This is not about proposal of any development. It's just a change in, in the zoning. This is transit-oriented development, part of our comprehensive plan, and what we're trying to do is all the goals that were aligned in this PowerPoint. But we are not in conversations with developers to try to make any improvements or do any projects. All it is is a change in zoning.
That works for me. I'm sorry for making you repeat it again, just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, well, I think I cleaned it up a little bit. It was a little bit confusing. I didn't understand it, Nick, until I went through it myself. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm hearing the audio is out again. The people are online.
Should I continue then, or should we wait up?
Wait a minute to see if we can fix it.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm online, and I can hear you guys, if that's worth anything.
All right. Thanks, Nick. I appreciate that. Any other public comment? Hearing done. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we will jump down to the ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1044, creating a Spring Mill Area zoning ordinance for both text and map amendments for the new Spring Mill Mixed Use, SMMU district, and Transit Friendly Design Overlay, TDO district?
So moved.
Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrain?
Patrice?
Ms. Terrain? Ms. Toll?
Yes.
And Chair McCusker?
Yes. Word, it's Gary's. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion, open public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendment for provisions for a change of non-conforming use language?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Chair McCusker. I'm going to go ahead and mark some exhibits, as we previously have done for our other hearings this evening. T1 will be a copy, proof of publication in the Times Herald on October 31, 2024, and November 7, 2024. T2 will be the draft ordinance. T3 will be a transmittal of draft ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library on October 25, 2024. T4 will be an attestation of ordinance accompanying transmittal to Law Library dated October 25, 2024. T5 will be Montgomery County Planning Commission review dated October 2, 2024. T6 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission recommendation, motion recommending board supervisor's approval of the ordinance as proposed meeting of October 8, 2024. As was previously stated, the board will hear a presentation by Mr. Guttenplan. Then the board could ask questions, take public comment, either continue the hearing if they wanted more information to a date certain, or close the hearing and take action on the proposed ordinance changes. Mr. Guttenplan?
Thank you. I know you might be disappointed. There's no visuals for this one. Sorry. This is a very simple amendment. We have found through usage of the ordinance and discussions with the solicitor's office that the current provisions to allow a change from one legally non-conforming use to another legally non-conforming use is very confusing. And just so you're aware, a legally non-conforming use is also something you often hear called grandfathered. It's a use that was either there before the ordinance went into effect, or it became non-conforming by virtue of an amendment to the ordinance. We changed the zoning in an area to residential, and a store remains there, that store would become legally non-conforming. Maybe that store wants to change to an office. The language was not very helpful. So the solicitor's office examined a number of other ordinances to see which ones were clearer and would help us, and based on those, we came up with a, a new ordinance, which would make it much clearer. It adds some criteria. Basically, it makes the, it will be done as many of them were before at the zoning hearing board by special exception, but it has clear criteria to look at the impacts and confirm that the impacts of the new use, the changed use, would be less than the current use. So maybe less traffic, less parking, less noise, less obnoxious impacts. And if an applicant can demonstrate that to the satisfaction of the zoning hearing board, then the use could change from use A to use B. So it's very clear, and it's very specifically laid out in the new ordinance. The other thing that the ordinance does is it repeals Section 116, 195, which is somewhat repetit... The other thing that the ordinance does is it repeals Section 116-195, which is somewhat repetitious and is not necessarily needed anymore with this amendment. And I guess what I failed to say is this amendment is rewriting Section 116-192. So the old 116-192 will be changed to what has been proposed here, and Section 116-195 will be repealed and deleted. It's a very simple, single-page amendment, but it will be very, very useful from an administration standpoint and for the zoning hearing board.
All right, thanks, Charlie. It sounds very simple.
It is. I probably made it more complicated than it is.
Any board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions?
I have Sedell Zo with her hand up. Her hands down, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was an error. I forgot to lower it. Sorry.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. We'll jump down to the ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1045, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Revise the Provisions Governing Changes of Nonconforming Uses?
So moved.
Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moi?
Yes.
Ms. Terrain?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to be ready for a public presentation with Mr. Ed Shin for 7135 Sheaf Lane Conservation Easement.
Please.
All right, good evening, Supervisors. My name is Edmund Shin. I'm a local attorney. I've been involved with several open space projects in the last few years, and I was recently approached by a resident who is in a difficult position. He has to make a decision on what he's going to do with his property, and he's given me an opportunity to present to you to acquire a conservation easement on this property. It will allow him to remain there. It will maintain the status quo in the area. The alternative is that, under the current cluster ordinance, the property could be developed. This property is located in, I call it the northwest section. It's the Sheaf Lane Broadax area, which is a high priority zone for conservation. So I put together a slideshow. I'm going to move quickly because I know we have an Eagles game at 8:30. White Marsh Township has become the gold standard for conservation. Twenty years ago, White Marsh envisioned itself as an oasis of green, and it's been working very hard to get there. The work of the Open Space Committee, the Board of Supervisors, and the late Hugh Moulton has made tremendous impact on preserving land in White Marsh, and it's really made White Marsh a great place to live and work. The amenities, the open space, the view sheds, all these things contribute to a great quality of life. So the goal at the time when the open space ordinance was adopted was for 4,000 acres of open space. It started with a plan to preserve 75% of the township's remaining open space. There was legislative action taken to adopt a tax, 1/4 of 1% of earned income, which goes to an open space fund to acquire properties and conservation easements on properties. Under the legislation, the enabling legislation, there's a series of purposes for which the open space funds may be used. A key one is to protect and conserve water resources and water sheds, and to protect and conserve forests. There's also protecting and conserving natural and scenic resources, and to protect scenic areas for public visual enjoyment from public right of way. Between 2007 and 2023, the township has collected 33 million in open space funds, and has deployed 28.7 million to acquire 350 acres and 15 transactions, and leverage an additional 200 acres of additional conserved land. The key one was Erdenheim Farm, which started this. It was 450 acres. That includes the 14-acre Dixon Meadow Preserve, which is open to the public and has become a pretty renowned burning area. We've got Well Street, Cedar Grove, Gateway Open Space Park at Cold Point, the 40-acre Highlands Mansion and Garden, Abolition Hall, 711 Sheaf Lane, which connected Willow Lake Farm with the trailhead parking at the Highlands to create 170 acres of contiguous public open space, trails, trailhead parking. The Highlands grew in size as part of that transaction, and now has beautiful meadows open to the public. The open space leadership has come from the Board of Supervisors and has come from township staff. The work of the supervisors and the staff have made all of these projects possible, and in the last three years, 100 acres of land have been conserved and protected from development, as well as the volunteers on the Open Space Committee that evaluate these projects. Chair Steve Kaufman and the late Hugh Moulton, as well as Liaisonant Elizabeth Moyn. So in 1995, this was an aerial geographic image of the township. And the top left in the blue box is the area that I'm talking to you about tonight. Right now, through conservation efforts, all of these areas are green, right? We've got State Park, a lot of golf courses, Erdenheim Farm. The WT is White Marsh Township acquired land. And then you have Highlands and Willow Lake up at the top left. Now, these are the 636 acres that are highly likely to be developed in the next few years. In my work with the Highlands and as a local attorney, I've got my finger on the pulse of these projects, and they're coming forward with some certainty. Now, there's 32 acres that I'm going to be advising you on tonight, providing information for your consideration. And that is in the midst of this Broadax area, which is a high priority protection zone in the township. Land planners have put together a yield for this property. Toll Brothers, other local developers, are looking at properties like these for cluster developments. This would yield 29 houses under the cluster ordinance. So this property, 7135 Sheaf Lane, is the last large lot with adequate frontage for density development in this area. This is Germantown Academy, the Highlands, Willow Lake Preserve, Morris Road. This is the area that is generally beautiful view sheds, a lot of open land. The Pheasant Run Creek traverses this property and drains 300 acres of land down underneath Germantown Academy into the Wissick. So a lot of what GA did when they rebuilt all their fields is they put underwater storm management. It collects water, and it shoots it into the Wissick. Now, they have some retention ponds that do help, but all of the area of Willow Lake Farm and the Highlands comes down through the Pheasant Run Creek and then into the Wissick. Under the plan that I've put together to conserve this property, there will be 24 acres of natural protection, stay-as-it-is, woods, open space. I've called it the Moulton 150-foot view shed buffer because this was something that he really spearheaded at the Open Space Committee level, trying to create 150-foot view shed all along Sheaf Lane, so that when people are driving down the road, no matter what happens, they have this 150 feet of sort of open area. It gives a feeling of openness I think you feel when you go past Erdenheim Farm coming from the city. And then this will also, on the front lot where the creek is, we're providing for a natural stormwater mitigation area that the township could construct at a later date to help with stormwater flooding. So here's a map of the conservation plan. It looks like it got twisted, but you've got, on the right-hand side, up here, existing property is minimum protection, stormwater retention ponds, maximum protection, a 1-acre building lot, and then here's the Pheasant Run Creek, which drains all of the 300 acres above. So the open space plan lists this as a priority open space opportunity, non-acquisition. What that means is use conservation easements. Don't buy the land. Just put a conservation easement on it, prevent development, and sort of buttress this critical area for stormwater management. So I'm talking quick to try to get us out of here. Basically, this area of the township is relatively undeveloped due to extensive preservation efforts by Wissick and Trails, Highlands, the township, and local residents. This is important because of the creek running through it that's draining all the land above into the Wissick. This shows the Wissick and Creek, and what it doesn't show is all the small tributaries that go into that. And because this is at the top of the township, everyone below it feels the effects of the flooding on the Wissick. So Pheasant Run is located in the AAA zoning district. The reason that this is a priority open space area is because the AAA zoning district has the largest acreage of wetlands in the township, with 61 acres, wetland margin 39, and woods 791 acres. The AAA zoning district also has the second-largest area of floodplain in the township, with 400 acres, which is why properties in the AAA zoning district are identified as priority open space opportunities. So here's the Wissick and Creek going past Mathers Mill and Skipback Pike. There's been houses that have been demolished because of the flooding from this creek. And with this conservation easement, there's going to be an opportunity to help to mitigate that as well as maintain the status quo. When the Pizac Preserve was done, which is not in White Marsh Township, they put in stormwater mitigation when they built all these houses. The sandy run behind my home literally moved. It moved downstream like 100 yards and shifted right after that development, because you develop and things move. I'm not a graphic designer, but I've basically tried to show what a stormwater retention area capturing water from all the area above on this property would look like delaying its inflow into the Wissick. This shows the woodlands that I talked about in the AAA zoning district, which is why it's an important area to protect. And this shows the property that is at issue. Above it is Willow Lake Farm. And this property is unique. Typically, when I bring an open space acquisition to the township, open space is public use. That is typically what I would do. This property does not connect to anything. Okay, the only thing this property has is frontage to be developed. And if this is developed, there's the potential for the neighboring properties to also be developed as part of that process. When I brought the last deal to the township, my concern was I drew all these lots next to it. And you develop one, and it works. And then the neighbor says, listen, I don't want to live here anymore. Sells. The developer buys that and develops. And all of a sudden, this area, which is pretty critical for the rest of the township's flooding, gets built up, and we lose it. So this is the last property that can really provide the frontage for development. And if we can conserve it, we can maintain the area. This shows the open space with Willow Lake Farm, the Highlands. It gives you a picture of how green it is and why protection is important. All right, this is another image of that. The reality is that, I spoke to the owner today. He's given me an opportunity to conserve it. I would ask for your consideration to allow me to come back and present in December. If I'm unsuccessful in conserving it, he's going to have to sell it. He's going to sell it to a developer, and it will get built. Thank you for your time this evening. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ed. I appreciate that. Thanks for your recognition of the Board and your commitment to open space. Appreciate that.
I just want to clarify one thing, so there would not be public access to this property?
No. And, you know, public access is really important, particularly when there's connection points. I'm working with the property above it to get the trail connection from Willow Lake to Woodcock Lane, which will connect to GA and the Green Ribbon Trail. But this property doesn't touch any other public open space. The only thing it does is by putting a conservation easement on it, it blocks out development around it. Because this is the frontage off of Sheaf Lane and the sewer system that, but there's no public land touching it. So the public access would be like, you walk up the driveway, you walk back down. It doesn't make sense in this case. Most projects will have public access, though.
Thank you for your answer. Thanks.
All right, any public comment for? You want to come up?
Glenn McDowell, just a question. So the owner has the option of either selling it or then just keeping it as with this conservation you're talking about?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So if, the way the conservation easement works is it's done by an appraisal. So you have a development value that Toll Brothers will pay for. And then if you protect it, the value goes down, and that's the conservation easement. This owner is offering it at roughly 50 cents on the dollar for an acquisition of that conservation easement. His desire is to stay there. The problem is, he's got a mortgage that can't get refinanced. So it's either put a conservation easement on it or sell it. And if he sells it, it's not to a person coming in to buy one house. It's to Bruce Toll, who's going to come in and build 29 houses.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, thanks, Ed. I appreciate it. We'll move on to resolutions. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-24, authorizing the submission of a local share account, LSA grant through DCED to rehabilitate 1,526? What's the LF stand for here, Craig?
Linear.
Linear Feet of Aging Stormwater Piping in the Township.
Second.
All right. Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Is that Krista?
Sure.
Krista will take it.
This is, this grant is something that we applied for last year, and we were awarded the grant for a very similar project to rehab some aging stormwater piping by lining it so it's trenchless, you don't see any disturbance to the ground. We want to go ahead and do that again this year. And in order to do so, we need your authorization to make that application.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moi?
Yes.
Ms. Terrain?
I think the audio keeps going in and out.
Okay. Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to adopt and advertise the 2025 preliminary budget as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Chair McCusker, as you said, we're here to present the preliminary budget. I'm a little smaller than Mr. Shin. Just going to turn the microphone down a little bit. Sorry, I'm waiting for the presentation to be put up on the screen.
That's all right. Want to talk about anything?
No. Eagles? I was told I had to be quick, but I've got an honor page presentation here.
It's fine.
Do you have it, Charlie?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at it, and it's on share. I apologize.
We're really up on our technology tonight. We're really up on our technology tonight. What are you laughing at, chief? There's no way you could figure this out.
Hey, F.B. You got people.
Charlie.
Younger people.
Oh, gee. Technology was never in my job description.
I agree, Charlie. It's not fair. All right.
All right. As we start this, I'll just go over a little bit of explanation of how the budget's put together. We start back in August. I send all the reports out to all the departments. Departments submit the budgets back to myself and the manager. We meet with each department, put everything together, and we present the working budget to you by October 1st. We've had two meetings, one on October 7th with departments, and October 14th with some of the departments and the ancillary groups, firehouses, the ambulances, going over their budgets. We're here tonight for the preliminary budget to adopt to the board because the preliminary budget has to be approved so many days ahead of the final budget, which will be approved as you see in December, on the December 12 meeting. As the work budget's put together, the total revenues right now are $22,249,060. Expenditures are $22,626,830. With a deficit right now at $377,000. Here are some of the numbers for the revenues. You can see the real property taxes, the real estate, earned income tax, all the way down to the business taxes, there's about 16.7 million of the revenue of the 22 million. So it's about 75% of the revenue is on your property taxes, the earned income tax, business tax, amusement tax. For them people that don't like numbers, a nice pie graph shows you where the revenue coming from. Again, if you look at that, about 75% is your earned income tax, your real estate, property, real estate transfer tax, business taxes. Some other ones are rent and franchise, fines and forfeitures, and licenses and permits that we receive. Here are the department's expenses budgets. I'm not going to read them all, but that breaks down all the departments totaling the 22 million. For the people that don't like numbers, you make a pretty pie graph showing, as you can see, the breakout of departments, Public Works, Police, Police Benefits make up a lot of your, the budget, Fire, Executive. So what are the positives? Real estate taxes at this time are 96.3% collected, with two more months left. We usually, in the last few years, ended with 97% collected, so we are above previous years, which is a good thing. That means less people will get leaned at the end of the year, less phone calls I'll have in January or February when they get the letter from the county saying their properties were leaned. Earned income tax and revenue for the business taxes are right on target. The earned income tax, I looked at numbers today, they are the same exact numbers that they were last year at this time. Business taxes are above last year and already above the budget. Real estate transfer tax is down compared to last year, but last year, if you remember in January, we had a big property sold, and we had about $600,000 of detransfer just for that one property. So consider we're only about $200,000 behind last year. That's pretty good. Building permits are up, health insurance costs with being in the trust, our costs are lower than most people. MMO for the police pension fund, we used a smoothing method to lower this year and let next year's pension payments in the pension plan. Our reserve fund balance is still in good shape, and we've reclassed some things to become out of liquid fuels money instead of coming out of general funding, and we did that some last year or some this year, changing it again next year. A little pie chart compared to the business taxes over the last 10 years. Just to give you a heads up, it says $2,408 for this year. As of now, it's $2,423 for the business taxes. Burgundy's $835,000. And the amusement tax, which is the golf tax, it's the golf fee. Golf courses are charged an amusement fee when people golf. We're at $78,000 already this year. I think when I got here about four years ago, it was about $40,000 we were collecting. So that is going up and helps us balance the budget. The earned income tax in open space, as you can see, this year we are at $5,42,000. Right now, we're at $5,647,000. We had a $225,000 deposit today. Again, everyone says, oh, you're behind. We're not behind because we're just getting to third quarter. We don't get to fourth quarter until January, February. I think I go over that every year since I've been here. So everyone's like, oh, you're not hitting budget. We will hit budget. We are right on track where we were last year. And earned income tax, I mean, open space was 1.8 when I did the chart, is now 2.39,000. So that is right on target, too. Again, here's the average. On the real estate transfer, I talked about that earlier. We are at, last year was a million one. On the 2023, we're at 931,000 right now. So we should hit probably a million dollars, depending on the November and December transfers. They usually do go down. People usually sell July, August, sometimes September. October's was 91,000, which was pretty good. We do have some new development being built, River Place and Margos that are being bought and sold, so we're getting a little bit higher. This is one thing I want to bring the attention as the assessment of the total township. This year, our tax bills went out at $1,913 million. Right now, I'm being told by the county, it's $1,911. There's been a lot of assessment adjustments. So that's the number I'm using to calculate the taxes if that goes up, which it goes up every month, it goes down every other some month. So I have to use that number to do the budget so I can guess, you know, how much real estate taxes will happen next year. Debt service, this is pretty level. Just to show what we're doing next year, about a million 18. Here's a chart I did last year, and I thought it'd be interesting to show. White Marsh is all the way to the left. Our milage is 2.3633. And you go Plymouth, Neesnar, and Whipane, and you go up to Ambler. Ambler's milage is 9.81. So just trying to show where our milage taxes compared to all the townships in this area. Well, the good chart I love to show is the tax ratio. Everyone says your taxes are so high. No, they're not. They're pretty level compared to the military I just showed you. But you can see the blue is the school taxes, the yellow is our tax, the gray and orange is the Montgomery County tax and Montgomery County Community College tax. So yes, the taxes overall, but when you look at White Marsh Township, we're 7.46% of the tax bill. And happy holidays from all staff to all residents. Any other questions you might have? I'm here to answer your questions.
Thanks, Kevin. Great job. Are you going to be back in December?
I will be back in December, hopefully with a balanced budget, and we approve the balanced budget.
All right. Well, I'll congratulate you in December on your balanced budget. Do you have any board comment or questions?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Any public comment or questions?
I'd like to ask a question. This is Sedell Zo. Did I miss it or was the capital budget not included, the proposed capital budget?
Not in my presentation. I only present the general fund budget, which is the majority of your taxes. Capital budget was given to the board back on October 14th, and at this time, it's what was presented to the board is what is, we're going to present to be approved.
It's in the budget, though. It's in the overall budget.
So there's, there are no further opportunity for the public to comment on the capital budget?
Sure.
Yeah, you could. Go ahead, make a comment.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, make a comment.
Ask your question or comment.
Well, there were, there were two items that called my attention, both of which, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but I believe they were both in the 2026, not 25, but 26-year. One was $100,000 for wavefinding signage in the Spring Mill area. And I wondered whether it is the intention of the township to seek, to underwrite some of that cost through grants, perhaps from a Monco 2040 grant or other sources, because it is a large sum of money, $100,000. So that's the first question. And I have another one. And the second question is also in 2026, I believe it was a sum of $15,000 for a floodway art and education project that involved drawing, drawing on the ground somewhere in the Spring Mill area, the line to which the water rose as a consequence of one of the recent hurricanes. And I have to admit that I chuckled when I saw that, given the developers, the developer who is proposing to build at the David's Bridal site, his attempt to get FEMA to move the floodway line closer to the river. So that will happen at the same time as White Marsh is drawing the previous actual empirical floodline somewhere on the ground. So that, it's not a huge sum, $15,000, but I have to admit that that made me chuckle when I saw that. But I'm more interested in the $100,000 for wavefinding signage. So is it the intent of the township to seek to underwrite some of that cost through grants or to cover that entirely through public tax dollars, White Marsh tax dollars?
I'm sorry. I will attempt to answer that. This is Charlie Gutton, Plan Sedell.
Thank you.
We always try and get grants, and I think you would note that we've been pretty successful in doing it. We have a Monco 2040 grant for another project in the Spring Mill area right now. And all these projects, the two that you mentioned, come out of the Spring Mills multimodal and land use study, and the amounts that are in the capital budget are estimates that have been done primarily by Gilmore Associates as a township engineer. They'll get refined as we refine the capital budget every year, and we will certainly seek any funding that might be eligible for these activities.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to allocate $700 to the Spring Mill volunteer fire department for their assistance at the fall shredding event at Miles Park?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So I guess, Mr. McInally, that we had a shredding event last month, and we're going to allocate $700?
Correct. Spring Mill sent some volunteers over to help with the shredding event. Every year, they rotate between the ambulance company and the two fire companies. Spring Mill was out there this year, and it comes down to $700 in the agreement that we have with the different parties. So asking to allocate $700 check over to Spring Mill.
Great.
Donation.
Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the township manager to execute a waiver of conflict of interest letter to the Township Bond Council to represent a separate municipal entity for their 2024 bond issue? Mr. McInally?
Yes. Our bond counsel, Obermeyer, has been asked to be the counsel for the underwriters for Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to go out for their bonds. In the agreement, they have to notify us, because they're working with us as well, that there's no competing avenues out there, that they're going to steal clients from us to sell this bond issue. So they're asking us to send a waiver that there will be no, that we don't perceive any conflict of interest with this contract.
Okay. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to execute a hold harmless agreement for a monument sign located in the ultimate right of way at 827 Bethlehem Pike, Montgomery Animal Hospital, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally? Or is this Charlie?
I think he's going to turn it to me.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you. You may remember several years ago, a hold harmless agreement was approved for a very similar sign at the Montgomery Animal Hospital at this site. At that time, Montgomery Animal Hospital only owned a triangular piece of ground, and that monument sign was going to be on that piece of ground. Since then, in 2019, they purchased a strip of land adjacent to their property, and they, it's, it came through here as a land development when they wanted to expand their parking lot, which they currently have been actively doing. And in the process, they determined that a better location for the monument sign would actually be on this adjacent strip of land and not their original triangular piece where their building's located. So as a result of that, we need a new hold harmless agreement because the parcels are separate. They have not merged the two into one, so it's a different parcel number. So it's almost a technicality that we're approving a new hold harmless to move the sign about 10 feet over the property line. It's been examined, it's 12 feet back from the curb, does not cause any sight distance issues, and staff is recommending approval of the hold harmless agreement.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the ESCRO release number five in the amount of $38,721.09 for SLD number 04-22 for 515 Germantown Pike, Ashford Wealth Advisors LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Krista, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the fifth and final ESCRO release request for 515 Germantown Pike. That's the, down by the intersection of Butler and Germantown, I think the second property in. They've requested a release of $38,721.09, and our office is recommending this release.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the ESCRO release number 12 in the amount of $237,991.19 for SLD number 05-14 for River Road LLC at 901 Washington Street?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Hello again. This is, as you mentioned, ESCRO release number 12 in the amount of $237,991.19. And again, our office has inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan. Following this release, there would be $496,570.90 remaining in ESCRO.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports for October 2024 with expenditures totaling $2,266,547.25, payroll totaling $677,243.78, and pension planned expenditure totaling $3,775.33?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. To the amended agenda, do I have a motion to approve four certificate of appropriations that were recommended by the HARB on November 13, 2024, for the following? 110 Black Walnut Lane, replacement of shingle roof with light kind; 129 Black Walnut Lane, replacement of shingle roof with light kind; 3139 Spring Mill Road, replacement of shingle roof with light kind; and 19 Catherine Drive, installation of a new four-foot fence visible from Spring Mill Road?
So moved. Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. Thank you. HARB met yesterday morning, reviewed these four applications, made a single motion for the three new roofs, and recommended certificates of appropriateness for all of them. These are all on homes that have been built in either 2001 and 2002, so they're not contributing resources to the historic district. 19 Catherine Lane was also reviewed, and that is a historic home. It's the historic farmhouse on the same original tract of land. A small fence is being put in to create an enclosure for a pet, and a small portion of that will be visible from Spring Mill Road. The type of fence was not specific. The applicant originally wanted a wooden post and rail. The homeowners association apparently wanted an aluminum rail fence, and at the last minute, there was some discussion by the HOA that perhaps the wooden fence would be okay. So instead of having the applicant come back, HARB looked at both types of fences, thought either one was appropriate for the setting, and recommended a certificate of appropriateness for whichever fence the HOA finally decides on. The applicant is required to let us know before she installs it what exactly we're approving as a permit.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the public comment period. If we have any public comment, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Allison Matherne. I live at 6314 Arlington Road, so a few houses behind Scoogies, at the very edge of the township. I'm here tonight with two of my immediate neighbors, Ali Ellinter and Kelly Salam. We are here because of the fatal accident that occurred on West Valley Green Road last Friday. And we're here with two specific items of concern related to that. The first one being that the three of us had noticed a car, a very specific car, speeding down our 25 mile per hour street at about 70 miles an hour daily. And the three of us together in communication figured out, you know, we knew what kind of car it was. Over time, we caught part of the license plate number. We eventually identified, oh, and I'm sorry, one of my neighbors got it on Ring video because he almost hit a FedEx driver coming up to her house. At that point, we contacted the police, who did come to Kelly's house and take a report. After that occurred, we figured out where this person lived, which was only a block away from us, and followed up to the police with that information. My two neighbors continued to follow up with several calls to the police. We did not see any increased police presence on our street. We rarely have a police presence anyway, I assume because we're the very last street of the township in that area. And now this person has killed someone. And we got, like I said, no responses from the police after that initial meetup and confirmation that they had received the video. And I understand that there's nothing you can tell me tonight about it, but we don't know where else to go to understand why our concerns were ignored. Like I said, you know, we requested that police patrol our street more. You know, we all made the comment that even if they didn't catch this person, it would be worth their time because people speed down our street all day, every single day, including school buses that fly down our street well over the speed limit. So like I said, you know, I understand there's nothing you can tell me tonight, but we didn't know where else to go with these concerns and make them public and understand why our concerns were ignored. And literally now someone is dead. The second part of this is how do we make our street safer, especially now that we understand this person has been let out of jail and is apparently back in our neighborhood? Hopefully, he no longer has a car to drive, but we don't know that. You know, we don't have sidewalks on our portion, on the Springfield portion of our street. We don't even have curb, the same as they do on Sunnybrook. At least Sunnybrook has curb separating the street and the yards. We don't have a curb line, we don't have sidewalks, and there's only one street light at the far end of the White Marsh Township end of our street, down by Meadow Avenue or Meadow Road. So especially this time of year, it's incredibly scary to walk on our street. And just between Scoogies and Meadow, there are 11 children under the age of 10 and 13 dogs. So, you know, it's a very active neighborhood. People like to be out and about. We talk to each other. But we're all honestly nervous about walking down the street. You know, part of it, again, is we don't see police. Every now and then, they drive down the street, I guess, doing a regular patrol, but there's no traffic enforcement, there's no speeding enforcement with any regularity. I think literally yesterday, we all noticed that there was a cop that caught someone speeding, we assume because of what happened on Friday and our previous complaints. So again, you know, I understand you're not going to be able to tell me anything or give me any solutions tonight, but where do we go to get this addressed? Because I believe we were previously told that our street didn't qualify for a speed bump because we didn't have enough traffic, which makes no sense to me because it's not about the quantity of traffic, it's about the speed of that traffic. And I think anyone being out there and observing that would note that traffic travels well above the 25 mile an hour posted speed limit. So what do we do? How do we proceed to get some attention on our concerns?
Well, first of all, you came to the right meeting. So you have all the people in the audience tonight who can address your needs. Safety is the number one issue in any community. We want everyone to feel safe in White Marsh. If White Marsh is unsafe, nobody would live here. So I'm sorry that you feel unsafe over there. But the chief is here tonight. If Chief, you want to come up and address some of these questions, and be good.
Yes. First, we've been well aware of the complaints, and we've been working with the Springfield Township Police Department. The particular car you speak of is a resident of their township. And I can't go into depth of the things that are occurring, but there has been investigative things going on between us and Springfield on that particular item. We've also had other neighbors complain, and we've been doing selective enforcement in that neighborhood, Arlington, Sunnybrook, the different roads. Our traffic safety unit has been out there. They're well aware of that with the parking and the speeding situations that go on, parking, more concerned Scoogies at the corner. And our traffic safety unit is well aware of the complaints in that whole flowered-down section. And we're continuously doing traffic studies and coming up. As a township, we use the PENDOT regulations for roads and what traffic control equipment we can use there. And there's certain qualifications for traffic lights, stop signs, speed bumps, all of those things, which we follow those guidelines. Our traffic safety unit, along with the engineer for the township, they work together. We study our roads and we do studies. We're well aware with the latest accident, which I cannot discuss at this time because we're still investigating that, that the traffic safety unit, once they're done with this work, we're already aware we're going to go back into those neighborhoods and redo our studies. We've had a lot of complaints lately because they've relined Bethlehem Pike, which we had no control over, may have changed the traffic pattern over in that area. But these are all things that we'll take time to study, and then we would come up with any suggestions of any changes that may or may not need to be made there.
Okay. Is there any, maybe Officer Stempel will go over and talk with the residents about any type of plan that we may be able to come up with?
We can surely do that, or if they, we've done it before, we can come to the neighborhood, or the neighborhood can come to us. We've held meetings in this very room with neighborhoods and the people. That way, the traffic safety officers are here, myself and my staff, and we can discuss. And I'm always available, myself, either of my lieutenants with any of your concerns that you have. Again, I can't go too in-depth into some things right now due to the nature of the investigations.
I understand that. I guess, you know, it rings a little hollow, given how we don't ever see police in our neighborhood, and we never see them monitoring the traffic.
Well, I could bring you, I'm not going to go into that. I could bring the reports that show when the officers are there and whatnot.
Maybe just have a car go over, say hello, shake hands with some people.
Believe me, Sergeant O'Dowd, Officer Stempel.
Yeah, I understand. I understand you feel really unsafe. And, you know, speeding is an issue all over our township, to be honest with you, all through every neighborhood. So there's so much the police can do. I understand you need a bigger, larger police presence over here, and everybody wants to see the cars. We'll try to do that for you. You know, we'll make it priority.
Also, too, I mean, this road repaving, the milling and repaving project that has recently started, and I guess we're last on the list, so I expect it will happen sometime in maybe December. You know, is it possible to get a speed bump installed when they do that? I mean, we have not, I mean, I just flipped to my neighbors, none of us have noticed any changes on our street since the restriping of Bethlehem Pike. I agree with you, that's a whole nother can of worms that is a turn of events for other reasons, but it doesn't seem to have impacted the traffic on our street at all. It has been this way for ages. Honestly, a bigger concern is the plan to replace the Valley Green, the road on Valley Green, I'm sorry, the bridge on West Valley Green with something that will carry larger and more traffic. We feel that's only going to funnel more onto our streets, and so that's a huge concern. You know, I'm not saying I want it lit up and sidewalks on both sides of the streets and everything, but it's, and I'm sure plenty of my neighbors would fight me on that because also if I did, because they don't want to shovel their sidewalks, not that we get to know anymore. But, I mean, it's just so, I understand what you're saying. I totally get that it's a problem everywhere, and the problem is people not paying attention and thinking they're more important than everybody else. But the situation on our street is, I think, unique in the township, and it's scary.
Yeah, I know that your issue is paramount to you, so I apologize for saying it's an issue everywhere.
No, it is.
But what I will say is, Krista, there are, like, the humps on Sunnybrook.
Yes.
But that's Springfield.
No, it's not.
No, no, no.
It goes across it in Meadow.
I was going to say, 15 years ago,
Is Wybor.
They put speed tables on Sunnybrook based on the studies at that time. And at the time, we had an ombudsman who put that through.
Are these the plastic ones?
No.
No.
However, the study on that one wasn't done through the traffic safety division. It was done elsewhere, and then they put them in.
So it may or may not meet PENDOT standard.
Well, we strongly believe that that's why more cars drive down our street, and particularly this individual we're speaking of was tearing down our street because Sunnybrook has a speed. So I don't know if the conditions would have changed based on that, but it seems nonsensical that we wouldn't be qualified.
The PENDOT warrants are quite specific, and they're the guidelines that we use. And as I said, the unit is, the traffic safety unit is planning to go back out and re-study not only your street, but a couple other streets in that area.
East Valley Green is a high priority. I mean, that's 10 times more, so I believe that's a steeper for county or...
It's, yeah, it's a county. But we can still study them, and we can, the powers that be, whether it's state, county, or whatnot, if we find something that would cause a change, we can always communicate with them.
Can I ask, since it's not a PENDOT-owned road, Arlington, do you have to follow PENDOT requirements?
We don't, but then we would have a lot of unenforceable traffic regulations throughout the township. If you win the court and they're not covered by PENDOT, then there's also liability that goes on to the township with things that are built outside of the regulation promulgated by PENDOT.
So the problem with government is everything's difficult. So if this was private industry, we'd be able, you know, we'll put speed humps in. But maybe, Krista, do you have any, maybe go over there and take a visit to see if there's any type of, I know we did the thing up with the traffic light up the block here.
Yeah.
If there's some, if there's some way to
Yeah.
Do some traffic.
I think the first thing we would do is go through the warrants for the speed humps, just like the traffic safety.
Well, we would have to do a study first and see volume, speed. There's a bunch of different items that have to be looked at. And we would put classifiers and different things to the roadway.
Yeah. Well, I guess for now, try to increase the police presence. Maybe have Matt bring the dog over. You know, there's a ton of kids over there that they would love to play with the dog.
We have plenty of dogs. We need more police.
You need the canine unit.
Well, the dog comes with a police.
I mean, there's plenty of...
Your suggestion, though, to have them meet. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Well, thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks for coming out tonight. I'm sorry you feel that way on your street. We'll do our best to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Any other public comment?
I have one on, oh, I have one online in this gentleman here.
Glenn McDowell at North Lane and Ryder Street. How do I make a request, or may I make a request for a study for a stop sign on North Lane and Ryder Street because of the speeding cars? It seems like the evening to talk about this, but it's dangerous to cross that street because cars have been speeding up North Lane. When I walk across the street to my daughter-in-law's house, my grandson, I'm looking, there's no cars coming. By the time I'm halfway across the street, suddenly a car at high speeds come up the hill from North Lane, because you can't see because of the blind hill. So I have spoken with someone from the police department. They said there's not enough traffic to call for a stop sign, but also I've had contact through Mary Jo Daly's office with PENDOT, and PENDOT will do a study of it if there's a request from the township. So I'm asking, could a request be made for a study so that PENDOT could then look into it?
Craig, could we have a request to PENDOT or, God, Chief, what?
Sergeant O'Dowd is already speaking.
He's already on that? All right. We're already on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
I just have a quick follow-up to the Arlington. Do speed humps and the studies change when there's sidewalks in a neighborhood? Does that affect, like, if there's a sidewalk in a neighborhood, does that change the standards?
Letting you know.
Only with respect to if they're narrowing the road or the perception of, like, curbs and sidewalks will increase the perception of, I can go fast. But the major things are speed limit, vertical grade, amount of traffic. I don't recall all of them, but you get to go through all of them, and if you meet them, then you're warranted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You said you had another public comment?
Yes, Steve Kaufman online.
Go ahead, Steve.
Steve?
Is he muted?
I'm sorry, I had to unmute there. I'm commenting on the earlier agenda item Ed presented at Shin, and I meant to chime in immediately, but was too slow on the uptake. I wanted to, as soon as I can find it on my cell phone, read some notes from the Open Space Committee meeting, I guess around October 23.
Steve, I got to keep public comment to five minutes tonight, just to keep that in mind.
This will be easily, easily within five minutes. This is a short, a short statement from Open Space. But first of all, back in, I think in July, we did consider, thinking about JC's question, the matter of whether there always had to be public access when we use Act 153 money. And Open Space Committee did conclude that, yes, generally, that's the case, but there can certainly be exceptions. There's no statutory requirement, for example. And, you know, there should be a good reason for the exception. So I wanted to provide that background. And then I'm going to read or slightly paraphrase some notes that I got from the township staff from our October 23 meeting. This has not gotten into our minutes, of course, yet, so this is unofficial. But I'm just going to read this verbatim. Hugh Moulton, it's in present tense, Hugh Moulton moves to recommend the 3 million purchase of a conservation easement with the following conditions. Number one, the township can... Number one, the township can install stormwater mitigation in the lower lot by Sheaf Lane in the natural protection area. Township engineer to determine if this is beneficial to the township, and that's something that Ed mentioned. Second point is that Open Space Committee felt that it was advisable, but by no means mandatory, that the township also get its own appraisal to determine fair market value, and that generally that should be a practice in open space transactions. I'm now paraphrasing my own thought there, and our practice in the past has been mixed. Planly, and Ed paraphrases actually in a way that was stronger, a resource management plan is developed by a licensed landscape architect. So that, that motion, that motion was passed and accepted, so you do have a, an endorsement subject to conditions from the Open Space Committee, and I just wanted to let you know that.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Any other board comment or public comment?
There's a gentleman in the back.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Sam Hotchkiss. I live at 901 Ryder Street. Sorry I missed the discussion of the spring mill zoning, but I'm here to ask about, you know, I see this is about further developing the area, and I'm, what I'm curious about is if there's considerations being given to providing affordable housing or things like, as a, my, my background, you know, I am now a homeowner here in White Marsh, and I'm very proud of that, but I know so many folks my age, that's out of reach for them, and I am concerned that, you know, even if we add housing supply to the neighborhood, which I love living in, you know, that won't help address this sort of cost of living crisis for many people, including especially young people, you know. So I'm interested, and I'm interested in, you know, being a part of this and founding a housing cooperative or something like that, that can, you know, rent these properties out at affordable rates, but I'm wondering if there is a consideration from the township in these zoning changes in ensuring that housing affordability is a priority in this, you know, rezoning?
Yes, so it is part of the rezoning. However, we can enforce it. So it is part of the plan, but it's up to the individual developers to do it if they want to get the bonuses and things like that. So what we talked about tonight was just a zoning change. It really wasn't about development or having conversations with developers. It was a zoning change to meet our comprehensive plan for transit-oriented development in that area, but affordable housing is a big piece of it.
Okay, great. Look forward to further discussions then.
Cool. Thank you. Any other public comment? Board comment? I'd like to announce that we had executive meeting tonight to discuss real estate. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting closed. Good night.
Good night, White Marsh.